Thank you. This is a little trick. I have a bird. It's a bit of a problem. It's a fight. If you push hard, it pushes. It doesn't like that.
I understand why not right now.
Would you push it down? Maybe. Thank you. Lawrence says, yes, we do. I would like to call to order the March 4th, 2024 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. First up is the approval of the work session agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the work session agenda, including the changes on page four? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we do not have anything on item three, so we will move to section four. Discussion items for action. First up is item 4.1 from Active Living in Parks. Senior Senator, general purpose, approved by Centralina AAA. And we're happy to have Byron with us, even though it says Ian on the agenda. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Ian is under the weather today, so I'm going to try to fill his spot this evening. Very simple action here. We have general purpose funds that are provided to us.
No, it was on mine. Thank you. The general purpose funds that we received-
Your mic is off now. Now it's back on.
It is on mine.
The wizard behind the curtain is probably working on that.
How's that? Perfect. So our general purpose funds that come in annually are utilized for free programs and events for our older population. We use those specifically for Older Americans Month activities, and you'll hear a lot about those as we come through. So what this action is, is a budget amendment to receive additional funding as the state's budget was approved. This is requesting $310 in addition to what we had budgeted for as they approve their budget for us to expend.
Okay, any questions for Byron? I think we ought to give that $310 some close scrutiny.
We'll be happy to send as much detail as we can.
Excellent. We'll be back in touch.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up, also from Active Living in Parks, is Swimming Pool Agreement. And that is Londa and Jacob, or Byron and Jacob.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Hopefully, these things cooperate with us, but wanted to bring to your attention today the Camp Spencer pool operating contract. So our prior contract expired December 31st of this past year. So we have been looking for our new contractor that contractor provides operational maintenance and lifeguards. There's too much bass. So we have, we put it out to bid and took in some quotes from three different companies, and we decided to move forward with the company we felt could provide the most consistent lifeguard, I guess, service. In the past, we've had issues with securing lifeguards to where we've had to close the pool early or not even open the pool that day. So we feel confident with this next provider that they have what it takes to give us the lifeguards we need to have a full operating season. It's been a couple of seasons since we've been able to say that, coming out of COVID with a national lifeguard shortage and this past pool season, if y'all remember, we had to close the pool early because somebody stepped on some glass in there. So we just want some normalcy is what we're after, and we believe the company that we've provided, or we've looked into Swim Club Management Group out of Huntsville, that they provide that consistency. So any questions from y'all about that?
Questions for Jacob. Okay, we do have a request to suspend the rules and take action on this tonight so they can get things in place. Do I hear a motion that we suspend the rules of procedure due to time constraints on this issue? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I would now entertain a motion to allow the county manager to execute the agreement after review by the county attorney for pool maintenance at Camp Spencer. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, next up is appointments to boards and committees. You all have a copy of all of those in front of you. Does anybody have anything to discuss on those items? If not, we will move to item 4.4, Economic Development Grant Program Policy. And I think this is, we talked about this once before. We postponed action on it to our retreat last week, and we discussed it there. And so this is coming back to approve the Economic Development Grant Program. So this would go on our consent agenda unless somebody wishes otherwise. Or any further discussion that you would like to have on that matter?
I don't have any comments or questions, but I would like to see it placed on new business rather than the consent agenda, which I know we'll get to the approval of the regular agenda at the end of the meeting, but I figure I should mention it now.
Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to talk about in that regard since this will be on our new business agenda for the next meeting? Okay, we will move to item 4.4, 4.5, Cabarrus County Schools Transfer Funds, and Jim Houghton's going to speak on that item.
Good afternoon. I was really hoping someone from the schools was going to be here to talk about this. The information that was provided, one of the school projects at Urban Elementary, there's more damage than they realized when they got into replacing the roof of there. And so they need some additional funds, $147,675. But as you can see in the memo, they have three other projects that are under budget that we can transfer the money to their urban project, and it won't cost the county any additional funds. So the school is asking if the board will allow for that transfer to happen.
Are these projects, and I know you may not be able to answer this since you don't work for the school system, but are these projects that have been completed, the elevator, the money that were, the excess money, that will be transferred, like the elevator replacement at Concord High, has that project already been completed that you're aware of?
I'm going to say it has not because, yeah, there's a line there that says they are not completed, but they believe these will be excess funds.
Well, I was just curious if, I know it had said that, but I thought something could be changed if, you know.
Yeah, I'm not aware if they're completed or not, other than what the memo says.
Because I would just be interested to know how they, okay, well, I guess that's all I need to know.
Well, the way that I would interpret what is written is all of these projects have not been completed, but they have been put out to bid, and the bids came in less than what they had budgeted. Is that your interpretation as well?
That's my interpretation based on the memo.
And I know that's what it says, but I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, we run into a situation where, you know, they get into the project and they'll come back and it may not be the complete accurate amount. So I didn't know if something had changed from what is on here.
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Jim, I just have a real quick question. You may not know it since you don't deal with the schools that much, but on the elevator replacement at Concord, are they currently using the elevator? Is it a safety hazard, or is anything that we put that off and put students at risk?
I do not know for sure. It was part of the deferred maintenance that we've, that the board approved at the beginning of the budget cycle.
Well, the way I would interpret this is they're not going to put it off. Just the bid came in less than what had been initially budgeted.
Is this 27.6, is that less than what the bid was?
That's the way I interpret it.
Oh, yes, sir.
Is that what it is? Well, I just didn't want, if it was a safety situation, and of course, if it's already underway, or the bid was under, yeah, I have no problem with it, but I don't want, and I don't think anybody else does either, to put students at risk with a faulty elevator for something else.
The original project was budgeted at $255,000. And, yes, as Chairman Moore said, it came in 27,000 left.
Well, that's a good way to use it. That's one off the list, you might say.
Yeah. One other question I have, so had they not needed this money to be transferred to another project, where would that excess money go? So for instance, the bid came under 27,000 for the elevator cafeteria, dehumidifier, $60,000, gym floor, $60,000, all under the bid. So then where would that money have went had it not?
When the projects are closed, I would bring them to this board, and it'd really be your decision. We could either put them back into another school project. We could bring it back to the CIF fund, or we could bring it back to the general fund.
Okay. And is that the process on all these other things? Because I don't ever recall that coming up to us, like if-
Yes, yes. Once a year, usually at the end of the year, we go through all the projects and whatever's finished. If there's a surplus, I'll bring it to the board, and you all can make that decision where you'd like those funds to go.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
Any other questions or discussions on that item? All right, thank you, sir. Next item, 4.6, Proposal to Purchase Part of Hickory Ridge High School Property. And we're happy to have Kelly Sifford for that item.
Thank you. So the Berg Church in Harrisburg has approached, well, they approached the schools about purchasing a portion of Hickory Ridge High School property. It is coming out to be about 3.67 acres that they have identified use for, and the schools have agreed that they do not have identified use for. They got an appraisal of the property. It is valued at $52,000. There is some flood plain on that property. Mr. Thrift has reviewed it and agrees with the value on it. Pastor Shell is here, if you all have questions of him about this.
Excuse me. The only question I have, as you said, the Berg Church, and this says the Multiply Church.
Yes, I pulled the-
Is that the same thing?
Multiply off of the thing that the schools did, and then when I got the appraisal, it had the Berg Church, so I guess they have a nickname. So it would have to ultimately go through the upset bid process, but did want to see if that was your will to proceed with that. And again, Pastor Shell's here if you have questions.
I think that is an excellent proposal. If they can use the property and we're not, that's $52,000 that can go towards some of these other repairs that we're talking about. Any comments, questions? All right, thank you.
Excellent, we will begin that process.
Okay, next up, Purchase of a Temporary Easement for Foresting at Stonewall Jackson Property, and Kelly has that one as well.
So the bids have gone out. We have talked to the owner of the area where we need to get the access. They have come back with a few clarifications, so we have not gotten completely to an agreement yet, but I think we are well on our way to an agreement to get that access. And the bids will be back on the 28th, and so I will bring those to you at the agenda session next month, hopefully along with the easement access. And we will need to suspend the rules in order to get that turned around quickly at that time. So that's all.
So we will not have that, will not be on our agenda for the regular meeting, not on our work session.
We will move it on out and just do it all at once if that is okay with you all.
And that's still that little pie-shaped piece down at 49?
Yes, the access to that. The bids include the whole project, but the access is just for that one little section that's a triangle.
Great. Any questions for Kelly? All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up's item 4.8 from Department of Human Services, Emergency Placement Fund, Child Welfare, and we're happy to have Sharon Reese for that item.
Good afternoon. I've been asked to let the board know about the state has issued some emergency placement funds to assist us in identifying or paying for placements for our youth with severe emotional behavioral issues. We've had situations where these children are hard to place, and so there's conversation underway for the county to be able to identify the best way to utilize these funds. And so the hope is for us to discuss this more at the March 18th meeting.
Okay. Now, are these, this is a different pool of funds than what we talked about on the potential arrangement for the home in Union County.
I'm not specifically aware of that conversation, but I do know that as of February 1st, the state issued additional funds to all of the 100 counties, and so Cabarrus had our allotment. And so this is something somewhat new that we are trying to identify the best way to utilize these funds.
Okay, so the message is stay tuned?
Stay tuned. That's a wonderful, yes, that's a way to summarize it.
I think this would allow you guys, I think, to receive the funds, and then they will come back with projected use.
Okay, so this, this does, this would be on our consent agenda to approve the budget amendment to receive the funds, and then the plans would come after that.
Correct, correct.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Reese on that item? All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, item 4.9, Facilities and Design and Construction, Presentation of Equipment Procurement, GMP for Behavioral Health Building. We're happy to have Michael Miller for that item.
We also have Jason Harris with Messer Construction. He was unable to be here in person, but he is on the team's meeting here. So Cabarrus County has a preconstruction contract in place with Messer Construction for a construction manager at Risk Services on the new behavioral health care facility. And on October, I'm sorry, February 22nd, 2024, Messer received bids on the scope of work that we're calling Bid Package Number One, and that's for an early procurement of certain types of equipment that take a long time to get here, basically. So in order for those to be here when we need them in construction, we need to order now. So if accepted, this change order would be to the existing preconstruction contract and be known as GMP Number One, and that dollar figure is $2,634,903. And Jason can speak exactly to what this, what pieces of equipment this covers.
Yeah, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Sorry I couldn't be there in person today, but to Michael's point, we've taken bids on major HVAC equipment that's for air handlers, that's two air-cooled chillers, that's for ERVs. We've taken bids on a diesel generator, excuse me, and all the associated transfer equipment that would be required, and all of the electrical distribution on the one line. So any transformer, switchgear, all the way down to panel and panel boards. And this is a derivative of what the market is currently telling us on what the lead times are on those pieces of equipment. We heard this board say that it's imperative to do this work in a timely fashion, and in order to do that, we need to make sure that we're ordering this equipment to meet the project schedule.
Okay, commissioners, do you have questions for Michael or Jason on those items? I think this is something we've heard a lot about over the past couple of years, particularly in regards to the electrical equipment, how difficult-
Yes, sir.
-it is to obtain that in a timely fashion.
So requested action is for a motion to approve the GMP Number One bid award and to authorize the county manager to execute the contract, change order to the existing preconstruction contract between Cabarrus County and Messer Construction, subject to review by the county attorney.
And the timeliness of this is going to be okay to approve this at our regular meeting?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, y'all.
Okay, we move to item 410, Point 10 Audit Contract for Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2024. Jim is back with us.
Good afternoon again. Each year, I'm required to provide to you a copy of the upcoming audit contract, and that is what's in the package. I'm asking-
The original project was budgeted at two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And, uh, yes, as Chairman Moore said, it came in twenty-seven thousand left.
Well, that's a good way to use it. That's one off the list, you might say.
Yeah.
One, one other question I have. Um, so had they not needed this money to be transferred to, to another project, where would that excess money go? So for instance, the bid came under twenty-seven thousand for the elevator cafeteria, dehumidifier, sixty thousand, gym floor, sixty thousand, all under the bid. So then where would that money have went had it not?
When the projects are closed, I would bring them to this board and it'd really be your decision. We could either put them back into another school project. We could bring it back to the CIF fund or we could bring it back to the general fund.
Okay. And, and is that the process on all these other things? Cause I don't ever recall that coming up to us like if...
Yes, yes. Once a year, usually at the end of the year, we go through all the projects and whatever's finished. If there's a surplus, I'll bring it to the board and you all can make that decision where you'd like those funds to go.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
Any other questions or discussions on that item? All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next item, four point six, a proposal to purchase part of Hickory Ridge High School property. And we're happy to have Kelly Sifford for that item.
Thank you. So the Berg Church in Harrisburg has approached, well, they approached the schools about purchasing a portion of Hickory Ridge High School property. It is coming out to be about three point six, seven acres that they have identified use for and the schools have agreed that they do not have identified use for. Um, the, they got an appraisal of the property. Um, it is valued at fifty-two thousand. There is some floodplain on that property. Um, Mr. Thrift has reviewed it and agrees with the value on it. Uh, Pastor Shell is here. If you all have questions of him about this.
Excuse me. The only question I have is you said the Berg Church and this says the Multiply Church.
Yes, I pulled the...
Is that same thing?
Multiply off of the, um, thing that the schools did. And then when I got the, uh, appraisal, it had the Berg Church. So they, I guess they have a nickname. Um, so it would have to ultimately go through the upset bid process, um, but did want to see if that was your will to proceed with that. And again, Pastor Shell's here if you have questions.
I think that is an excellent proposal. If they can use the property and we're not, that's fifty-two thousand dollars that can go towards some of these other repairs that we're talking about. Any comments, questions? All right.
Excellent. We will begin that process.
Okay. Next up, uh, purchase of a temporary easement for foresting at Stonewall Jackson property. And Kelly has that one as well.
So the bids have gone out. We have, um, talked to, uh, the owner of the area where we need to get the access. They have come back with a few clarifications. Um, so we have not gotten completely to an agreement yet, but I think we are well on our way to an agreement to get that access. And the bids will be back on the twenty-eighth. And so I will bring those to you at the agenda session next month, hopefully along with the easement access. And we will need to suspend the rules in order to get that turned around quickly at that time. So that's all.
So we will not have that, will not be on our agenda for the regular meeting on our work session.
We will move it on out and just do it all at once if that is okay with you all.
And that's still that little pie-shaped piece down at forty-nine?
Yes, the access to that. The, this, the bids include the whole project, but the access is just for that one little section. It's a triangle.
Great. Any questions for Kelly? All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up's item four point eight from Department of Human Services, Emergency Placement Fund, Child Welfare. And we're happy to have Sharon Reese for that item.
Good afternoon. Um, I've been asked to let the board know about the state has issued some emergency placement funds to assist us in identifying or paying for placements for our youth with severe emotional behavioral, um, issues. We've had situations where these children are hard to place. And so there's conversation underway for the county to be able to identify the best way to utilize these funds. And so the hope is for us to discuss this more at the March eighteenth meeting.
Okay. Uh, now are these, this is a different pool of funds than what we talked about on the potential arrangement for the home in Union County.
I, I'm not specifically aware of that conversation, but I do know that as of February first, the state issued additional funds to all of the a hundred counties. And so Cabarrus had our allotment. And so this is something somewhat new that we are trying to identify the best way to utilize these funds.
Okay. So the message is stay tuned?
Stay tuned. That's a wonderful, yes, that's a way to summarize it.
This would allow you guys to receive the funds and then they will come back with, with projected use.
Okay. So this, this does, uh, this would be on our consent agenda to approve the budget amendment to receive the funds and then the plans would come after that.
Correct, correct.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Reese on that item? All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, item four point nine, facilities and design and construction, a presentation of equipment procurement, GMP for Behavioral Health Building. We're happy to have Michael Miller for that item.
We also have Jason Harris with Messer Construction. He was unable to be here in person, but he is on the, the team's meeting here. So Cabarrus County has a pre-construction contract in place with Messer Construction for construction manager at Risk Services on the new behavioral health care facility. And on October, I'm sorry, Feb-tem- February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, Messer received bids on the scope of work that we're calling bid package number one. And that's for an early procurement of certain, certain types of equipment that take a long time to get here basically. So, um, in order for those to be here when we need them in construction, we need to order now. Um, so if accepted, this change order would be, um, to the existing pre-construction contract and be known as GMP number one. And that dollar figure is two million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. And Jason can speak exactly to what this, what pieces of equipment this covers.
Yeah. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Sorry I couldn't be there in person today. But to Michael's point, we've, we've taken bids on major HVAC equipment. That's for air handlers. That's two air, that's two air cold chillers. That's for ERVs. We've taken bids on a natural or a diesel generator, excuse me, and all the associated transfer equipment that would be required and all of the electrical distribution on the one line. So any transformer, switchgear, all the way down to panel and panel boards. And this is a derivative of what the market is currently telling us on what the lead times are on those pieces of equipment. We heard this board say that it's imperative to do this work in a timely fashion. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that we're ordering this equipment to meet the project schedule.
Okay, commissioners, do you have questions for Michael or Jason on those items? I think this is something we've heard a lot about over the past couple of years, particularly in regards to the electrical equipment, how difficult
Yes, sir.
it is to obtain that in a timely fashion.
So requested action is for a motion to approve the GMP number one bid award and to authorize the county manager to execute the contract, change order to the existing pre-construction contract between Cabarrus County and Messer Construction, subject to review by the county attorney.
And the timeliness of this is going to be okay to, to approve this at our regular
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Great. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, y'all.
Okay. We move to item four ten, point ten, audit contract for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Jim is back with us.
Good afternoon again. Each year I'm required to provide to you a copy of the upcoming audit contract and that is what's in the package. I'm asking for the board to approve that contract and authorize the chairman to execute it. It would be for, uh, it's not to exceed seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Questions for Jim? The one question I would have, we're talking about spending seventy-five thousand dollars for an audit.
Yes.
If I understand correctly, this is not a luxury that, uh, that we choose to pursue, but we are required by law to have a complete audit every year.
Yes, sir.
Is that true?
That is true. Yes.
Yeah. And I think, and some other things that I've been involved in, I've, the comments that I've heard recently is that it's hard to get multiple bids.
Correct.
On, that there, there are not as many firms that are interested in competing. Is
That, that is correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's fewer and fewer firms that are doing governmental audits.
And this is, we've had Martin Starnes, this is the third?
This is the...
Or is it longer than that?
I think it is the third year. It's the third year of our current contract and I bring it, I still bring it to you each year.
Right.
But this is the third year of the current contract. Yes.
Yeah. So after this contract ends, then we gotta start looking around.
Correct.
Okay.
Which, which, yes, yes, sir.
Just kinda FYI stuff that I was curious about. We don't want to in any way discourage them. Did you have something Commissioner Meese?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. In your opinion, why is it getting harder to find firms that do not want to do this?
Uh, I, well, I, they're tougher to do. There's so many regulations. So there's fewer firms doing it and then, and the firms are having a hard time getting folks to do the audits.
Okay.
So it's a staffing issue.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, next up, capital project grant interest budget and Jim again.
So I'm sure you're all aware, there are a few of our capital projects that we receive funding, some grant funding. Frankless Park is one, the Behavioral Health Center and the Courthouse. Each year, well, all these grants are a little bit different and some require us to put the interest that we earn back into the project and these three do. So I'm just asking the board to approve the BA and the updated project ordinance that allocates the interest we received on these three back into those projects so we can spend it.
And that is for grants that we have received, but not yet expended?
Correct.
Yeah.
We've expended some of those funds.
Uh-huh.
Behavioral Health, we're just starting that project. Courthouse and Frankless Park, we've almost spent all those funds and this should be the last interest for those two.
Yeah. So on the Behavioral Health Center, I think it's thirty-four point five million dollars that we received from the state and that, that's been here for over a year?
I think at lea- yes, yes, sir.
At least.
At least a year.
Yeah, I was just curious. That, has that fund already been increased by previous interest?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So that thirty-four point five is now grown to some number larger than that.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. You have any, don't have that, if you don't?
I don't, but I can get it for you.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, other questions for Jim on that item? All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we go to item four point twelve from Human Resources, uh, modification request for sign-on and referral bonus programs. And we're happy to have Lundie Covington with us for that item.
Thank you, commissioners. And I think Lauren is going to pull up a presentation for me. This is a, a project that actually you initiated about this time last year, just in some general conversation. Um, so we thought it would be appropriate to give you an update as far as things have gone. And to also let you know, we are depleting the funding you granted. So if you're so willing, we would maybe like to re-up that for this year. So just to kind of give you some facts to start us out with, you did give a seed money last year of three hundred thousand dollars from your contingency budget and we implemented the program in June. Um, we identified some criteria to help us determine which positions would be appropriate for this. So it has been a small subset of our overall positions. Um, the number has changed a little bit during the years. We've added one or two more on. But basically it's positions that are difficult to fill. Either we have lots of those positions. It's one we get minimal applications for. So you can kinda see the criteria up there. It's been open for a longer period of time. So we feel like the criteria are working well. As far as how the program was initially set up, we did a twenty-five hundred dollar sign-on bonus. And generally that's paid when the employee comes on in their first pay period. We did, did identify one position where we've split that into two payments to kinda spread it out a little bit where we're bringing in trainees. So that's generally, like I said, twenty-five hundred. And then the referral bonus for existing staff, uh, we've been doing fifteen hundred on that at two different intervals at six months and twelve months. Since that time, since we kicked it off in June, we've been able to onboard a hundred and nine countywide positions that received this bonus. Um, of those, we've lost ten at the point we pulled the number. So roughly nine percent, which is a little less than our overall turnover rate. We've also given out fifteen referral bonuses in that same span of time to our existing staff. Thought it might be useful for you to see which departments are taking advantage of that and having success in bringing on positions. So at the top of that stack right there is our eligibility position, which is the Medicaid expansion position. You approved thirty positions during the year last year. So we had to start from point zero to bring in those thirty. And we've actually been able to onboard twenty-seven positions or people using this bonus. Next behind them was the sheriff's office with eighteen deputies that have come on. Transportation, at the time we talked about it last year, they had like fifty percent turnover and were down many slots. Since that time, they've been able to onboard fourteen drivers. And at last check, while they still had thirty-ish percent turnover, much, much improved. And they have been full in terms of drivers at certain points this year. So you can kinda see as it goes on down, the types of positions we've actually utilized this for. We also felt like it would be helpful to get some information from our existing departments. For some reason it's not wanting to advance for me. Lauren, I might need you to... Okay. So we'll tap dance for another moment. So you can see, like I said, the other positions that are, um, utilizing as soon as Lauren's able to advance. SWAT has been another area where we needed desperately to bring in individuals and this has helped in fulfilling those hiring slots. So we don't anticipate changes if we continue on with the program because again, it's meeting some of those needs. So hiring manager feedback, um, we did do a survey just to see what our supervisors are thinking about the positions and the, utilizing this to fill. We had thirty-three responses and most generally favorable on the sign-on bonus. We did have some interesting feedback and some conversations with a few departments that basically said their employees are maybe not so much enticed by a sign-on bonus. They're certainly appreciative of it and they benefit from it, but it's maybe not as much of an attraction to them. It's maybe more of a retention factor, which I thought was an interesting observation. But I think overall it, it seems like managers have benefited from having this option available. Uh, the next question was about that fifteen hundred dollar referral bonus and a little, um, more lukewarm with that, I think, and possibly because we've had so few people who were able to benefit from that. But it feels like that's a nice thank you to our existing staff, but managers are seeing maybe more reward out of the sign-on bonus. So we do have a few recommendations that you'll see playing out in just a few minutes on that. What we would like to propose to you this evening is that we continue the sign-on bonus. We continue the referral bonus, consider adding a retention bonus, and that we continue to utilize the same criteria and the process we've had to date with the county manager approving positions as we see need. So by area, I can kinda walk you through what we're thinking might be beneficial moving forward. So with the sign-on bonus, as I mentioned, currently we do a twenty-five hundred dollar amount. What we would like to propose is that we, we up that to three thousand, but we split it into two payments. So rather than giving somebody twenty-five hundred when they start, giving them fifteen hundred dollars when they start, like out of that first pay period. So they feel some of that. But we hold back the second fifteen hundred dollars and pay that after a year. So that's more of that sign-on slash retention kind of working together. We feel like what that would do is address that need to have some upfront money because a lot of our competitors do have sign-on bonuses now, higher amounts than we're even doing. But it, it would satisfy that. But what it would do is reduce the risk of not getting that money back. When we pay somebody twenty-five hundred dollars upfront, if they leave after a month or two, we don't have much to pull back to get that money back. So this would allow us to pay out at a little different interval and we feel like it might be more beneficial. Uh, we do have a payback provision and I'll talk about that in a moment. But all of these numbers are our proposals. So if you want to discuss it as we're going or you have different thoughts, I just wanted to share kind of what the HR team felt would be, um, beneficial and also in keeping with what other jurisdictions are doing.
Lundie, have we had very many that received the sign-on bonus that didn't stay around hardly long enough for anything? You said maybe one or two?
Well, like I said, I think overall we've lost nine throughout the year.
Right.
We lost the majority of them before we even paid out the bonus. And that's best case scenario. So if they decide within the first week or two, because they know that payment is out there, this isn't working out, we haven't even made the payment. So we've been able to kinda pull that back. We have had maybe three, I believe, who have left with more time in service and we've had to work out payback agreements with them. So it seems like, you know, once they get started, it is doing a pretty good job of at least holding them in those slots. Um, so again, we haven't even had it in effect a full year, but so far that's been our experience.
Would you say overall, uh, these, the sign-on bonus and the referral bonus have been successful from a, it's been a year now. Would you say that we did a good thing there?
I, I definitely think so. I think by those numbers and by you seeing the number of those hard to fill positions, I, I think it has had an impact.
Okay. And this retention bonus, I guess you're getting ready to go over that.
So referral, what we felt like there, because we're asking maybe for an increase on the sign-on side, we thought we probably could cut that back to a thousand dollars versus fifteen hundred. But what we would do there to make it a little better for staff is instead of doing that in two payments, basically recognize that they bring the person to us, but they don't have a lot of, uh, hand in keeping that person here. So rather than making them wait six months and twelve months to get their money, reduce it to a thousand, but pay them when they bring the person on. So that would be a more immediate thank you to them. Um, that one doesn't have a payback now. So again, just trying to balance out the money a little bit. The retention bonus though, is the new piece I want to request. And what we're thinking there is we would like to do, um, a fifteen hundred dollar retention bonus paid after one year. There's not but like a handful of positions we're kinda envisioning this for right now. So I can give you a couple of examples. Um, but what we think that would do is, is kind of level out the playing field, so to speak, between external and internal. So my two examples, um, after our SWATs, we are at the point now of trying to extend those offers. It's been a very, very challenging position to fill. So we feel like by doing, um, that fifteen hundred upfront, fifteen hundred after a year, we might have people who will stick. I don't know that we have any existing staff that will shift to that schedule because it is a very different rotating twelve-hour night schedule. But it would give an internal person some incentive to slide over and maybe occupy one of those slots if we could give them at least that fifteen hundred dollars after one year. The other example that comes to mind that we're thinking this might be appropriate for, um, we have a lead worker or trainer for our eligibility positions. Basically those thirty positions that we hired for Medicaid, we have to have somebody to train them. Right now they're at four of eight. They're struggling to fill that position. We probably have some internal folks who could be ripe or, you know, good to move into that role. We haven't had any success in pulling them into those roles yet. But the theory is if we could add that fifteen hundred dollar retention bonus for them after they work in that new role for a year, that's a little added incentive. So we would see that as a very limited utilization. But again, if we have people who are internal who want to move into one of these positions, right now they don't get anything. It's just the way we structured it. So that's why we think that might be, um, another good suggestion to implement.
I wanted to ask you, of the hundred and nine people that you have hired, what percentage of them would you say would have come, we would have hired them anyway without the retention bonus, I mean, the, uh, the sign-on bonus?
I, I don't even really...
Did it entice those people?
Yeah.
Did that factor determine whether they will go and work for us or not?
I think that's a really hard question. We haven't put that out to our hires. Maybe we could do that going forward. Um, I think for some, like I said, I talked to a department or two and they felt like it was more beneficial for retention. If you're drawn to law enforcement, for example, you probably have some of the credentials or are moving in that direction. So it may not be what gets you into that occupation, but it may be what helps them to choose to go here versus to Rowan County or a competitor. But I think especially with some of those Medicaid expansion positions, it, it was a factor. Cause we know we're, you know, it's, it's a pretty, um, low rate of pay overall. And if we're not able to do that, we're not going to be as competitive, um, as our neighbors. So I, I can't really give you a number or a percentage. Um, we could maybe go back and resurvey this group, but I, I feel in my gut, it has had a, um, you know, a hand in helping us with some of these hard to fill positions.
Yeah, I can't speak to all of them, but I know on the transportation positions and I serve on the Transportation Advisory Board. And so we've gone for several years, every meeting a report about high number of vacancies and difficulty getting drivers. And I think I maybe reported this at one of our meetings, but several months ago, uh, when we met, they said, we are at a hundred percent for the first time in a number of years. And, and I said, what do you attribute that to? Uh, and they were very definitive that these sign-on bonuses had made, made the difference. I think there may have been some rate changes for them or not.
I think in that last study, only recently, and I think the sign-on was ahead of that. So the fact that they were already pretty well-staffed when you did the last increase, that helps again with retention.
Yeah.
But I think to your point, getting them here, that probably was a, a factor for that particular.
And that, that certainly was what those department heads, uh, and folks in that department.
That's what it was intended for.
Right.
You know, and so I, and I would just like to, you know, if we could, I don't want you to spend a bunch of time on it, Lundie. God knows you got plenty to do as it is. But I'd like to, you know, sort of get an idea as how effective it's been. Cause we fight this thing all the time about, you know, being competitive with our neighbors, not only for this, but economic development and other areas that, you know, we try to do our best to keep up, keep up with them, you know, or be better really. So I'd like to know how effective it has been.
Well, I think we could maybe go back and ask the people who are still here, you know, they could give us a...
It could be a real quick cap casual type conversation, you know, would you have come anyway? Do you like the job good enough that you would have come anyway if you'd known what the job was going to be?
Yeah.
Who you'd be working with and all that. Y'all could fabricate that any way you want to, but it would be good information for us though, for ongoing things when it comes to personnel.
Yeah, what matters to them.
Yeah, that's right.
So just to kinda quickly explain the payback provisions, you know, when we put this out there, we do expect employees to stick around with us. So there's a, a window of time where if they work for a year, they've worked off half of it. We would only expect half of it back. Uh, but somebody who comes and leaves within two months, we want the full amount back. So that is a deterrent to coming, taking the money and leaving and going elsewhere. We definitely feel like that's beneficial and should stay in place. We did have a recommendation or two about payback for job changes and that's where people stay with us. What we'd like to do there is be a little bit more flexible. If somebody receives the bonus, but they stay in a position with us that, um, is related, we'd like to allow them to keep it. If they're promoting up, it makes sense to allow it. So that would be the example of somebody moving from an eligibility specialist two to a three, that lead worker that's so valuable to us. Where we wouldn't want them to retain it is just to come in and get it and then move to a different occupation. So for example, with the sheriff's office, we couldn't allow somebody to be a deputy and then move to a record specialist that doesn't require it and retain it. So just a, a few shifts to make sure we're retaining people and not penalizing them because again, it could be a reason they leave us. Funding. So this is something we've struggled with a, a bit and I've literally just had some conversations today where I think we have a, a pretty good feel for how this will look. Because of how DSS receives funding from the state, um, we believe that we can collect, um, reimbursement for bonuses, both, uh, the sign-on bonuses that we're doing and if we extend, extend that to retention. So what that would do is allow us to recoup some of the money that we use from your contingency fund to use for other positions. So what that would do is allow us to recoup some of the money that we use from your contingency fund to use for other positions. Um, depending on what, what occupation it is, it depends on the reimbursement rate. So those Medicaid expansion positions are like 75% reimbursement. If it's one of those social workers, it's more of a 50% reimbursement. But that should help us to expand the money a little broader. And to this point, uh, this year, we have $75,000 that we think we can pull from the funding that will help spread this out further. So the final slide is just, um, kind of that important question, how do you feel about this and would you be willing to extend it? Um, what we did this year was kind of while funds remain, meaning if we run out of money, we run out and we stop offering, we're pretty much to that point when we bring in our March hires that we will have depleted the initial, um, outlay. So just want your guidance and advice if this is something we continue or if you have other suggestions or feedback for modifications to the program.
Is there a way we can do a internal survey, one we don't have to pay for? Um, that, that they can actually tell us what's important to them? Because at our budget retreat, we had the bereavement pay, we had, um, the benefits come up, we had all sorts of different things. And now we're looking at this. And when we're trying to look at what we can do and, and squeezing the wallet a little bit, it's easy for us to sit up here and make decisions, but I don't know what's important to the people that work for the county. Um, and you know, that's, we all sat here and said we were going to put employees first, but there's only so much we can do. So is there a way we can find out, like, hey, this is important to us and we're willing to give up this if we can get this? I mean, is that something we can do?
So we, we've been doing, um, an employee, uh, feedback survey every other year that would come due in the fall. But it sounds like what you're looking for is more of a very specific benefit survey. And we maybe ask them to rank these items in terms of their priority. So I, um, depending on how you ask the question, everything is important. And that's the kind of answer we'll get. But it almost sounds like you're asking for like a forced ranking or if you have to choose between limited options, which has the most appeal?
And because of the evaluations and politics going on and posturing, uh, we're going to have to know what's important to who. Uh, so I, it doesn't matter to me how it's worded.
Okay.
Um, hey, there's only so much money that goes around, you know? We need to know which ones matter the most to people. You know, do I want to cut a wellness center or do I not? I mean, that's what we're talking about. So, um, you know, would you rather have a wellness center or would you rather have, um, $1,500 retention bonus? And it, it's going to come down to that, I think, uh, unfortunately. But that's, that's the life we're in right now. So, um, like I said, definitely not a study that we have to pay for. But I mean, that, that's the reality of what we're up against. So I'd love to do it all, but I, I, I don't know if that's going to be possible with what we're trying to get, get done, so.
Can you, can you remind me, whenever we implemented this, was that at the last budget? Uh, or it was after, was it after the budget?
You, you, uh, gave us money out of '23 that we implemented in June. And it carried over into this year. So it was out of the previous year's contingency.
Right, okay. And so basically that money has lasted, uh, you said until-
Pretty much March. Once we get through March, if we aren't going to renew it, we'll need to pull any of that from future offers.
Okay, and so, um, these proposed changes, how will that balance out with the, the funds that, if you're wanting to move forward with the next budget? Is the proposal to include this in the next budget or?
Well, if you, if you fund it out of your contingency, we wouldn't have to necessarily do that if you did it like you did last year. If you don't want to fund it out of contingency, then we would have to run it through the budget and, uh, look at a July start date.
Okay, so, so I mean, we can run it through the contingency, that's fine with me, but, um, okay. And how much, how much are we looking at?
Again, this is your, your call. If you feel the same amount as last year is appropriate, if you feel less, we do know we can utilize the DSS spend for some of the positions. Um, you know, we're in better shape with some areas. We may be in worse shape with other areas. It's just hard for us to determine what those needs are going to be. But, you know, we would work with the county manager to approve positions where we see the need. We could even dial it back and have a smaller number at the start and expand it as we see issues populate. So we have a lot of flexibility, a lot of options. It's just, you know, again, I felt like it was important to come back to you and say, "We think it has worked." It's just how much, if any, would you want to put in it going forward?
And now these expanded Medicaid positions, I remember us approving 30 for that. And you had just made mention that they were 75% reimbursement?
That is my understanding, that we can draw down 75% for those and 50% for the, um, social workers. That's something I would defer to Dana Pastoras and Raj on more of the finance questions. I've been working with them on that.
Because I, I thought whenever the state had chose to expand Medicaid, that it was not going to cost the counties any more money for, wow, I thought it was going to be 100% reimbursement for those positions.
On the salary expense, I, I, that's the numbers they gave me. And maybe that's a conservative number, so I would defer to them to answer that exact question. That was just my understanding as we were looking at it for the, the bonus piece.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to know. Well, I, I'm fine with the proposals that you have here. I'm okay with moving forward with it and to what number, uh, you know? I guess we can, what was approved last year?
300,000 last year is what was set aside for this. And I'm not really sure what the contingency holds right now. That would be a Raj question or Boden question?
Commissioner Wortman, do you have something?
How much do we have in our contingency fund left? And, and we don't have any idea how much this would, we just know how much we went with. Because what I'm getting at is, is this going to affect revenue neutral by doing this?
If it's outside of your budget, I wouldn't think so, but that's, I mean, that's more of a finance question.
If it's the same amount of positions and the same amount of money, then it's, it's not. If you're going to increase that over, I mean, right now, we're going to work the budget just as it is, current year, and then anything over that. So if you would add to it, it could potentially have an impact on that. Is it a small impact? We, we don't know until you tell us an amount.
I see the sheriff's office just helped out quite a bit. Is that correct?
We, we had the second highest number of hires, yeah, going to the sheriff's office for their deputies.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but it's just, you know, if, if, if we're going to sit here and say we're in favor of this, then, then we're in favor of it. Can't be in favor over here and, and talk about something else over here. So I'm in favor of it. It, it helps our employees, especially since it helped the sheriff's office, uh, fill positions. But I just wanted to make sure that, that it's all out there and everybody knows what we're talking about.
Just to make sure I understand correctly, we funded it for fiscal year, we're in fiscal year '24 now, and we funded that from our contingency that was available in '23. So it was not a budget issue at all last year. And so if we funded out a contingency, and that lasted nine mon, about nine months. And so if we funded out a contingency this year, it would not, it would be out of the fiscal year '24 contingency. So it would not impact the budget that's already set. I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that correctly.
Yeah, you, you, especially wherever you're pulling it from, it, this is, this is a finite amount of money. This isn't something that's going to grow every year and stick with them. So it's not increasing their salary, it is a one-time-
And we could choose to continue to do that in fiscal year '25 if-
Correct.
If we, if we wanted to.
But we've kind of stated it's there while the funding lasts. So when the funding is gone, that's when we pull it down and we suspend it. So before we suspend it, we wanted to get ahead of that to say, "If you so choose, or if you want us to suspend it, let you see how other things are going to work out and we could possibly reestablish it at a later point." That's another option.
Right, and the, the other thing that, that I will mention, I think I'm correct on this, is I, I mentioned those transportation positions. Um, and so the, the question that I've asked previously, when we have had a lot of vacancies, and of course, those, those are people on dialysis trips, medical trips, things like that. Most of them are a result of, of state and federal grant funding that provides those trips. So my question has been, so what do we do if we don't have enough drivers to cover those trips? And the answer that I think I've received is they call taxicabs to, to do that, which is a much more expensive, I think, method of doing that. So, you know, sometimes you might save money on this. The money that you spend over here to fill those positions saves money over here in, in the expense side. So it's, it's not always quite as clear-cut as we would love the entire world to be. Am I right in my interpretation?
Well, the point, the point I was getting at is we, we hear a lot about wasteful spending, you know?
Yes.
Tighten the purse strings, you got to tighten them here. Well, here it's very clear that this benefit has helped out the sheriff's office, transportation, detention officers, swats. So in my opinion, that's not, that's not wasteful spending. If, if it's able to fill these positions, and that's why I want to make it real clear, where, you know, what are we talking about? Because in my opinion, that's money well spent.
Yeah, I've heard some pretty, pretty out-there signing bonuses from some of our neighboring counties. Am, am I exaggerating when I say $20,000? I, I think that's what I heard.
I think the 10 to 20 number, five is certainly a number we've heard from a, a number of jurisdictions.
That's what we're competing against.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what I wanted to say was pretty much in reference to what Commissioner Wortman was talking about, you know, with the revaluation year and people so concerned about going back to revenue neutral and all of that. And then I look at, uh, the benefits for our staff, our current employees, the ones that we've got, those are the ones that I want to take care of upfront. Take care of them upfront, because I, I've told Commissioner Morris many times, through my own 20-year experience of being an employer, it's a whole lot better to retain than it is to hire and retrain, because hiring and training is very expensive. But, you know, in this year's proposed, but, well, it's not really a proposed budget yet, but when we had our retreat, um, Saturday a week ago, we were talking about, uh, the, um, uh, the, the budget there and the requests for personnel. And in that rest, in that request was 90 people, 7.7 million dollars. Well, 48 of those is for the Medicaid expansion. But if we get 75% of that back, I don't know whether that 7.7 is a net or a gross, I don't know. But the point of me saying that is that revenue neutral, we're 3.5 million dollars short. But if we just do half of the request on personnel, even that's four and a half million, which would get us out of the red a little bit. But, uh, I'm for doing whatever we have to do to keep and retain our people. But in the back of my mind, and I'm sure everyone else, the back of our mind is, you know, how close can we get to revenue neutral and make everybody somewhat happy? But I know we're not going to make everybody happy. I think if you had it down to zero, there was nobody would be happy. And then be fussing about where their benefits are, you know, and where's, where's everything that we're used to? And, uh, but, um, I, I don't think we can do enough for our staff because without the people, we can't do nothing. And it's the people that make it work. And that's the biggest asset that we have is our people. And we need to keep them, do what we can to keep them. And, uh, but cost is going up. I, I think Lundie, someone brought to us the, it might have been you in your presentation on Saturday, the health insurance going up, $347,000. That's a pretty good expense, you know? And, uh, it's a long ways from the three and a half million that we're short. But, uh, it's things like that that just keep adding up and we just keep stacking it up. Next thing you know, we'll be back to where we are now on the tax rate. And that, we got to try to, uh, do as good as we can for that. So that's all, I'm, I'm good with it, like you proposed, you know, have it, have all we can.
I know we've been through, I, I know this isn't the salary study. This is just for new hires, but, you know, we implemented this, I guess, last year and it sounds like it was a success. And a meeting I had at Department Social Services, which is one of my liaison appointments the other day, they said that it has really helped out their positions. And so, you know, it sounds like it's successful. The salary studies that we've done for each of the departments, I think we've all unanimously supported, um, these salary studies. And, you know, of course, we, we've got to take care of the employees that we have. And we also, you know, clearly have to recruit, uh, you know, for these, um, open positions. But it sounds like it's helping, so, um, like I said, I think we've all unanimously, unanimously supported that over the past year. So I'm happy to move forward with it.
So I'm hearing a consensus that we go forward with it, but I still don't know where the money's coming from.
Well, it sounds like we need to get to your current contingency, so you know what is there, so you can decide what amount of that you might-
Yeah.
-choose to allocate for this?
And it could be, we could, we could allocate, like the last time, we allocated $300,000, this is how long it's lasting. We could allocate just enough to carry us through the rest of this fiscal year and then deal with it as a budget issue. Or, I mean, we've got several different options, uh, available. And so I'm assuming we could get that information together and still be able to cover this in our regular meeting in two weeks, so that we don't experience a lapse.
We can, yep, come back to you two weeks with that number.
Does that sound good to everybody? Alrighty, very good. Thank you. Then we will move to the next item, human resources, public safety market study. And Lundie has that one as well.
And joining me, Ashley Dobbins is coming in to sit with me in person to walk you through a presentation. And then Dr. Victoria McGrath is on screen for us. She is going to start us with a presentation, kind of a recap of some information she shared at the retreat, um, to kind of set the stage for this particular portion.
Great, thank you very much. I, um, oops, sounds like I've got an echo going here. All right, uh, for those of you just, uh, I'm just going to recap. I'm not going to spend as much time as I did during your retreat. I know there's other people within the room, so just for those, uh, the sake of those folks, I'm Dr. Victoria McGrath. I'm CEO of McGrath Human Resources Group. We were established in the year 2000, so we are going on our 24th year in business. Uh, there's two sides to the business. And the one that's probably more important today is we are a subsidiary corporation of McGrath Consulting Group, Inc., which is a public safety consulting firm. So it, uh, works with police, fire, EMS, and dispatch from the county level on down. We broke off into our own subsidiary in 2012 because people thought we just did police, fire, EMS, and dispatch. And that's not, uh, correct. We do it for all positions from the county level on down. Our specialty is compensation studies, uh, and predominantly in the, uh, public sector. So we were asked to come in for a couple of things, but what I'm going to concentrate on for you today is to take and look and do a market study for public safety positions and then make some recommendations regarding that data. Uh, number one, into your current salary schedule, which is again, the topic for discussion today. And then take that information and then integrate it into, uh, a revised compensation plan for the county. And that, we are in the process of working on at this point in time. So one of our methodologies was when we met with managers, we talked with them, talked about, you know, what their current practices and policies are. Uh, we had individuals fill out a position questionnaire that helped us give us significantly more detail about the position. And then we collected salary data from 19 different organizations. And we collected the minimum, the midpoint, the maximum, and the actual incumbent data. Um, and the actual incumbent data is really very important because it really- And the actual incumbent data is really very important because it really gives a true reflection of what people are being paid at this point in time. And here's the list of municipalities that we went to and then determined how your salaries were in relationship to the average of this group. We do look at the average market rate, and we will eliminate any outliers. So if there's anything that is statistically too high or too low, we do eliminate that just so that we can make sure that we have a true average of the organization. So when we're evaluating salaries, one of the things that we need to look at, however, is obviously we're never gonna get to that right number. So we look at a range. And right now, probably a couple of years ago, based upon the economy and the shortage for staffing, we now look at anything that's above a 45% comp ratio, and that's the ratio of the current to your organization is considered to be paid appropriately. Anything below a 45% comp ratio is deemed to be non-competitive or not keeping up with the market rate. So when it came to the public safety positions, 72% have a comp ratio of under 45%. So they would deem that your minimum starting salaries are not keeping up with the market. And that's probably no surprise to the, to the public safety folks that are sitting in the room. And so therefore, you do have a few positions, about 28% of the benchmark positions, that are aligned with the market and will not require a lot of significant adjustment. So when HR does their presentation, they're gonna see that there's gonna be some folks that, you know, are fine, are paid appropriately, and no adjustment does need to be made. We then look at your salary schedule, and typically the midpoint of a salary schedule should represent the average market rate. And what does that mean? That means the person should be at that average market rate typically within three to five years. That means they're fully capable and competent of doing the job, and they should be getting to that area. So one of the things that we looked at were for the salary ranges for public safety, did that midpoint of the salary range represent the average market rate? And it does not. And that shouldn't surprise us considering the minimums are so low, the midpoint is obviously gonna be pulled lower and does not represent that average market rate. And then what we did is we looked at incumbents because sometimes salary schedules will tell us one thing, but your pay practices might be doing something different. And unfortunately, that's not the case. So we looked at what the average person is making in your department and compared it to what the average person is making within that same job title. Now, if there are more than one individuals, we do an average. So if there's multiple sheriff's deputies, we're gonna take an average of the sheriff's deputies and compare it to the average of the sheriff's deputies that are out there. And again, 75% are under market. We do need to be careful with this analysis, however, because what this analysis doesn't take into account is tenure. So you do have a lot of new individuals within the organization. I would expect them to see within the 30 to 44% comp ratio because they are new and they are at the lower end of the salary range. Obviously, the same thing if we have long-tenured employees. If I have a comp ratio of 60% or above does not mean that they're being overpaid, it means that they've been with the organization a long time and are at the upper end of that salary range. The group that we have to worry about is down here between the 0 to 29% comp ratio because those folks are obviously in the pay ranges that are below market and therefore need to be, have some adjustment made to it. So overall, what we've done, and I'm gonna let HR kind of take over, is we have taken this information, we have taken the salary data, and we have integrated into your current salary schedule. And I believe they're gonna be sharing a document that you're familiar seeing with where it currently is and what it's being transitioned to. We are estimating a cost for this, and the county has a traditional system of doing 5% per pay grade, which is again something that HR will be talking about in just a minute and come up with a cost. And then, once we have this in place and go, and set, we will then move this information onto the other salary schedule that we are creating that for the county as a whole. So, you know, in summary, you know, I'm not sure when the last time public safety was evaluated, but I will tell you that you are not alone in having competition for public safety folks. It's a nationwide issue. Folks are not going into the field, and in some of those fields, it's understandable in the respect of they may not necessarily, you know, let's put it this way, it's a lot tougher to get a position in public safety than it is to lose it, especially when you've got everybody with cell phones and cameras questioning everything and watching everything they do. The other issue obviously we have is not only they not going into law enforcement, but we just don't have enough people, you know? Most of you look too young in the room to understand, but, you know, as older generations are leaving the workforce and there's not enough of the younger folks taking, taking our place. And so we're gonna have to, you know, it's, it's almost a bidding war at this point in time because everybody believes if they make their salary higher than the next one, this, it's like the Field of Dreams, they will come. And so we continue to see public safety outpacing one another as one community does it, the other community has to top it off. At some point in time, it's gonna have to stabilize. So with that, I'm gonna stop talking now, and I will let HR do their thing and answer any questions.
I think the only question that I would have is the field of vision on her camera. She's talking about the young people in this room. I'm happy about that. Thank you for that comment.
I figured you all started when you were 10 years old, so you're all child prodigies.
No doubt. Questions, commissioners, for the Zoom presentation?
Okay, well, thank you, Victoria.
And I'll, no problem, and I'll stick around so after their presentation, if any questions pop up, I'll still be here.
Perfect. Well, good afternoon. We are here today to present our public safety market study recommendations. This is an area that we are seeing significant movement that's happening quickly around us. Our recommendation this evening is one that we feel will be critical in having positive impacts on our recruitment and retention of our public safety teams. So our standard method of reclassification is moving 5% per pay grade movement. So for example, if the market is indicating a need for a move from a pay grade 15 to a pay grade 17, we would move the employee into the new grade and provide a 10% increase. This particular study impacts about 550 employees with EMS, emergency management, fire, and the sheriff's office. Our recommendation is to bring full-time and part-time employees to the new recommended pay grade based on market data to provide a 5% increase per pay grade to impacted employees. The initial cost estimate of this methodology for pay increases is around $7 million. You can see the breakdown below. Emergency management and fire is approximately $200,000. EMS, approximately $800,000, and the sheriff's office, approximately $6 million. And I'm gonna pause for a moment and allow Lundie to share a little bit about some past market studies and those impacts.
And to allow you to breathe. We know this is a significant number. Dr. McGrath stated she wasn't sure the last time we did some studies, so I do have a few dates I can give you. The last time we studied the sheriff's employees as a group, we made movement there in July of 2022. At that time, we also included just EMS leadership and fire leadership. So it's been two years, you know, since we did anything with that particular group. October 21st of 2022, we went back in and did EMS. At that point, that was what I would consider some aggressive movement because we, when we did the initial study, we knew the market was moving very quickly around us, so we kind of pushed pause on the EMS employee positions and came back with that package in October. And it was definitely much more aggressive, more movement than what we did with the sheriff's study. Back in 2022, most of the employee moves were limited to 5%, so very minimal at that time. The last movement we had for our firefighters was July 14th of 2023, so they were addressed most recently, but also a smaller amount. And as you've already heard, we really are dealing with a market that is moving very quickly, very aggressively. So the data that was collected is based on what is happening today. We are hearing, though, lots of buzz about jurisdictions around us that have other more aggressive packages they're putting together now, and they're speaking with their boards. So we would prefer to be in more of a leadership versus lagging role in this area. So that is why it is very aggressive. Let me give you another number because in fairness, that's the employee number. But typically, when we report this out, we give you the loaded cost, so you can consider that as well. So that's the cost when we add in our taxes, employee benefits, et cetera. That takes the number annually up to 9,500. Not 9 million, 538,000. So yes, 9.5 basically. If we were to implement this early, which is what we would also prefer to do, and we'll have the sheriff speak to that in a few minutes as far as the time sensitivity, we feel like we will be looking at 1.9 to 2 million for the remainder of this year. That could be covered under lapse salary, though. It's just when we get to the next year's budget that that will be a number we would have to work with. So if you're okay with it, Ashley will move forward with the remainder of the presentation, then we can entertain all of your questions. Okay.
Okay. So some of the benefits of the 5% method, and a lot of these things are kind of lessons learned over the years. It keeps the employee in the same placement within the new pay grade that they are currently in within the current pay grade. Allows us to continue making offers within the pay range to recruit and hire experienced team members, and helps avoid pay compression, keeps us from having to go back and fix that at a later point. So an example of keeping the employee in the same placement, if we have, let's say, a seven-year employee and their current grade, they're at about the 40th percentile in the range based on the experience they came to us with, based on their tenure and their performance, we're gonna move them to that same placement within the new range, and they kind of hold on to where they are in their range. Some of the impacts of not using the 5% method, it causes pay compression between new and tenured staff. When everyone's lower in the range, we have, we have difficulty making competitive offers to recruit experienced staff members, and just has some overall negative impacts on recruitment and retention. I have a few examples of the impacts and benefits that I'm gonna share with you shortly. So a few years ago, we had a compression study, and the consultant provided some recommendations on how we can avoid future pay compression. And one of those recommendations is that when the pay grade changes, that we move the employee to the appropriate place within the new grade, meaning move them to the same placement within the new grade that they are in now. So this is the example I shared a few moments ago. If someone has worked up to the 40th percentile in the current range, we want to keep them in that same placement within the new range. So in this paramedic example, using the 5% method, you can see the employee tenure, current pay grade, and current hourly rate. When we adjust to the new pay grade, we are keeping the employees at the same placement within the new pay grade, and this method holds on to the work that we've done when we make the initial hire and provide credit for education and experience, along with their movement through the range based on tenure and performance. The least expensive method and one we wouldn't recommend is to only move employees who are not at the minimum of the new range up to that new minimum. Anyone who, whose pay falls within the new range would not receive an increase. So in this example, you can see the most tenured paramedic has no movement, leading to dissatisfaction, turnover when those with less tenure are moving closer in the range to them while those with longevity have no movement in the range. Employees with zero to three years all move to the same point in the range to the minimum. Best practice is to have separation within the range based on experience, and new hires will have to be offered at lower rates. Are the minimum due to internal equity are not give, and it makes it harder for us to give them credit for their experience, and we lose good candidates.
Ashley, could you go back one slide? That, what's, what's going on between two years of service and three years of service? New hourly rate actually goes down instead of going up. Two years of service, new hourly rate 2509, three years of service, 25.
If you look under the current pay rate, that two years of service is just a little bit higher than the three years, so that kind of pulls over into the new hourly rate because we're keeping them in the same placement. What sometimes happens in that situation, that two-years-of-service person might have already had tenure with us in another role, or they may have been a paramedic at another agency for a really long time, and we gave them some credit for that when they came in.
Gotcha, so that's just where they're moving from and to.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. When we look at the method of moving only to minimum, we can see that the 16, 12-year and the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I've provided one more example for deputy sheriff, which shows some, some pretty significant market adjustments. So here we have a 16-year, a 12-year, eight-year, five-year, and a one-year example. So you can see that using the 5% method again holds the current placement in the range along with separation of rates between team members based on previous experience, tenure, and performance. And then in the moving only to minimum example, when we look at these folks, the 12, the 16 and the 12-year tenured employees have a pay rate that falls within the new pay range, so they would have no movement. And the eight, five, and one-year employee all have to be moved to the minimum in the new pay range and will all fall to the same hourly rate even though there is quite a difference in their tenure. So because this study has the largest financial impact on the sheriff's office, at this time, we would like to invite Sheriff Van Shaw to come up and share about why he feels this study is so important for his department and for public safety in general.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate you hearing from me today. Some key points I just want to go over is that currently, due to other market studies in Cabarrus County and surrounding areas, our, our office is the lowest-paid law enforcement agency in Cabarrus County to include the Highway Patrol and other state law enforcement agencies, too. So it is putting us in a tough spot of competing for that applicant poll. So for a number of years, we were either at the top or near the top, and we were recruiting out of the top 20% of graduating BLET students or lateral move officers. I don't have to explain to you, that's probably gonna move us down from the top 20% down to a, to a lower range. We currently have 69 vacancies across the agency to include approximately 30 deputies, detention officers, communicators, and vacancies in some of our other areas to include criminal investigation. What we've tried really hard to do is span the vacancies across so where we can move people, especially on the deputy side, we can move them to where we're maintaining services and response times and those types of things, but, but working, working obviously at a little bit of a disadvantage. So why, how did we get here? So how did we get here? In 2019, we received over 806 applications for the sheriff's office, and we hired 50, 59 individuals that, across all positions, that are specific to the sheriff's office. And we ended up retaining about 35, so we had a net movement of filling vacancies by 35. In 2020, we had a net movement of 14, and so we were filling vacancies that existed and were in pretty good shape. In 2021, market studies started. The town of Mooresville was the first that dramatically moved up their starting pay, and I began to see a trend on a couple of aspects. Those first two years, I mentioned, 19 and 20, we weren't losing very many employees to law enforcement, other law enforcement agencies. We lost one to, I think, Homeland Security, and another one to another federal agency or state agency. We lost zero to law enforcement agencies in 2020, and in 2021, we started seeing losing two. In 2022, we lost seven. You can see kind of how these market studies are beginning to impact. 2023, we lost 18 to other law enforcement agencies. So we're seeing an increase, where before, losses that we saw were based on getting out of the mar, getting out of the career, seeking another career, moving in the private sector, those types of things. The last two years, we received 548 applications in 2022, so basically a 300 application reduction. We basically hired 51, we retained two. So we had a net advantage of filling vacancies of two. In 2023, it was 547 applications, we hired 56, we had a net retention of two. We filled two vacancies that existed prior to that year. With 23 officers being eligible to retire in 2024 and 2025, I cannot sustain these numbers without going into a negative. It's the bottom line. If I lose 24 over two years and my net out is two, you can do the math, I'm down 20 more positions. It's related to the market studies, they're happening all over North Carolina, it's just not this county. It's all over North Carolina, Union County, Iredale County as well. One of the interesting things that I read yesterday, when you look at the state of North Carolina, this statistic came out of the North Carolina Department of Justice from the Attorney General. Last year, there were 428 more officers, 428 more officers left the force last year than were hired in North Carolina. So there was a net loss in North Carolina of 428 officers, so 428 new vacancy positions. So I want to say it's not just specific to our county, but it's a trend that we're seeing across the county. The pool, the applicant pool is shrinking, as you can see, by a substantial range. We're trying to do a number of things. We come at this and realize that it's a substantial amount of funding that would have to be allocated to do this. We, having one of the larger budgets, we went and asked for zero personnel this budget year. I'd rather be able to fill the positions I've got, retain the employees I've got, than ask or request any additional personnel. So we are coming in at zero. We're also doing the lowest continuation expansion that we've done in the past several years, and as well as any expansion. We're trying to keep that down to a minimum, trying to do our part in this, and hopefully, although it may pale by comparison to the number, but hopefully doing something. I think, you know, this market study would allow us, I've looked at it, Ashley and Lundie have been great to work with, the study would substantially help us recruit and retain folks. You know, it's, it is, the old cliche, it is what it is, but it's universal. Are we preparing? Yes. We recently, over the past several months, hired a company called First Arriving. They specialize in the recruitment of law enforcement officers, they're a nationwide company. We brought them in, their consultants have met with us, they've given us ideas, we've got a recruitment strategy that we're going to launch, depending on the outcome of this market study. We don't want to launch it with old numbers, you know, if there's going to be new numbers, we want to launch that. There's other factors that are at play. We've been under mandatory overtime in our detention center for a number of years. It begin, I'll be honest with you, begins to impact folks that come to work, and they're required to work additional days out of the month, additional 12-hour shifts. We have to do that to meet state requirements for each pod that we operate in the detention center. So we have to have so many people in there. That's definitely having an impact. Our overtime is high. If you look at, we've, we're running, probably for the year, this year, we'll end out at about $1.7 million in overtime. Can we get rid of all overtime? No, you have late shift calls, you have transports in the sheriff's office, mental health, prison to prison, prison to jail, all those types of things. A trial runs over in court.
No.
We've got to stay there and be there. So we can't get rid of all, but can we substantially lower that by filling the positions that are vacant? Every position we add helps, but it's, we're trickling in right now. I mean, I can tell you, today I hired a deputy. Last week, I lost a deputy, one to a better Bank of America, I can't compete with them, that's a career change, and one to mental health reasons that feel like they couldn't continue to work in the jail. So that's a two-week snapshot, and today's just Monday, so we're hoping. That's the good news of hiring a deputy today, so, and again, trying to stay competitive. So I'll stop. I'd be glad to ask any questions. I brought my command staff, there's a representative from just about each division, detention, training and recruitment, the patrol side, response side, anything. So if you have specific questions, if I can answer it, they're in it daily and can respond to it.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I have a statement. I respect the fact that you guys have already done as much as you can do to help us with this burden. Nine and a half million is a lot, I think that equals, probably going to equal about two and a half, two and a half cents on the tax rate.
Projected, yeah, about two to two and a half percent.
I am your biggest cheerleader, and I will 100% wear that on my shoulders to support it. I think you deserve it, and I will 100% stand behind the sheriff's office and EMS, and I do appreciate you guys going ahead and trying to be proactive to help us carry that burden. But I have zero issue saying I support that, you 100% deserve it.
Thank you.
I think you may be the second biggest cheerleader, because I've got a long history of North Carolina sheriff's office, but we appreciate everything you guys do.
Yeah, I don't think your mic's on.
I'll never turn it on.
First try. Good gracious. But with the increases that we see here, what would that put us in the market? Would it put us above market average?
It depends on the agency you're looking at. Some of them will be right in step, some of them, of course, will still be a little bit over, maybe some of the smaller markets. Some will be right in step with, and some we will be like a little bit over, which is good, because we want to stay a little bit over in the next few years, while everybody else is starting to move and catch up. So that would put us where we want to be.
I noticed on the initial report that there was an asterisk by the city of Concord, which indicated they did not participate.
Correct.
Is that because they currently had a study going on of their own?
That's correct.
And they have already acted on that?
Yes.
And which is?
And we did get their information, once they, once they put theirs into place, they just didn't respond to the form, through the formal process.
Right. And so they are significantly higher than us at this point?
At this point, yes.
And so that is literally a walk across the street and get more money situation.
Earlier in 2023, Conaples City did their pay study, and they're also well above us currently.
Yeah, and that's pretty close to walk, walk across the street, maybe across the block on that one. I'm glad you pointed out the overtime expense, you know, that kind of falls in line with what I was talking about earlier. When you don't, sometimes you say, oh, we'll save money by keeping the pay scale lower, but then we spend more in overtime, and that's a pretty significant amount, $1.7 million in overtime pay. And then the other, the other question that I asked, partly because I want people to hear it, and partly because I actually don't know the answer to the question, but it seems like many of the questions that I'm receiving over the last couple of weeks, the answer is, you know, people say, why do you do A, B, and C? And the answer is, we do it because the law says we have to do it. You know, we revalue property because the law says we have to. We do it every four years because the law says we have to, when our rates fall 15% or rise 15%. And why do you do it the way you do? We do it because the law says we have to. And so you said that you pay overtime to have the required number of people in the detention facility because the law says you have to, what happens if you don't?
As you well know, we get inspected on a regular basis. If we don't have the proper staffing, we will get fined, or, you know, other measures can be taken.
Right. So it could be an additional financial burden.
Yes.
Over.
Plus lawsuits. I mean, obviously, having a facility properly staffed, you're going to pick up. A lot of people don't understand that a detention officer is moving throughout that facility constantly. They're making two checks on every hour, they have to be random, they have to be recorded. If they're on suicide watch or special watch, it's even an increased number. So you're talking about checking on, today, 342 inmates, twice an hour, every hour, 24 hours a day. Any miss of any of those was referred to as a scan is a problem. Miss one, it's a problem. You know, we have enjoyed good jail inspections where there were no scans missed, it's because we're keeping the people there. I can tell you, other counties are struggling just to keep the minimum number there to make their rounds, and, you know, the state, and rightfully so, those rounds keep people from committing suicide, harming each other, do those types of things, and make sure of their well-being. So I kind of go down that rabbit hole, but it's more complex than just saying, we need to pay a DO more. It's a very labor-intensive job, it carries a lot of, you know, liability for the county. You know, not so much for that DO, but for the county, and we work through those constantly, you know, when they arise.
I think, I think I have read in the newspapers, seen on the news, a number of situations where unfortunate things have happened in detention facilities, and exactly what you just said was the report. This was investigated, and it was determined that this check-in wasn't made, or things were not on the right schedule, and so then it becomes a much more expensive, if something bad happens, and there's a, not only what happens if you don't follow the rules, but if something bad happens, and then the lawsuits and the other things that come along with that can be extremely costly.
Absolutely.
Yes. That, that's, I mean, perhaps we need some of our communications people here that have conducted the surveys that we do on a regular basis here at the county, but if my memory is correct, public safety, law enforcement was one of the highest-rated items in our community survey. I mean, that's from the taxpayers, that's the people that we work for, and so they have put a very high importance on public safety, and that extends to our EMS folks as well as the sheriff's office. And so I think we've got a pretty clear mandate from the people that we work for that we need to take care of those things, and make sure that that money is used efficiently, which, when I say used efficiently, I mean that we have to spend the appropriate amount of money to avoid additional expense.
And there is, you know, I could also touch on training expense, but, you know, as I said, every time somebody walks out, we've talked about turnover and the cost of training, recruitment and training and those types of things. If I, I prepared, but I had one of our staff folks prepare just the basic cost. If I have to, if I filled every position for 30 deputies, it would cost me $25,000 in equipment materials, not equipment, instructional materials, time in the classroom, all of that combined, ammunition for them to qualify with, so not cars, not anything else, that's just those categories, their BLET uniform, education materials, ammunition, their salary for those hours in which they're in training. The training cost for those 30 deputies is 771,000. That's what's got to be expended out of my training budget to bring on 30 deputies, and, you know, because it's already been funded for a car, for a position, all those types of things, so, but those are real costs that turnover creates. And I didn't even put a number on recruitment, the time we spend, you know, going to job fairs and recruitment, you know, types of seminars and those types of things, and it's tough, and you're competing with everybody. When you're up there with your compensation at a pretty high or competitive level, that's exactly what you are, you're competitive. You can win them over with some other things, career opportunities, those types of things, but if you're not competitive salary-wise, compensation-wise, you're not even getting in the game. I mean, I can show them all the toys and stuff, but at the end of the day, if I'm not competitive on salary, I'm not going to be able to recruit them in.
I want to repeat back to you what you just said, to train and equip 30 deputies, and you're, how many did you say retirements you had?
I've got 24 coming up in the next two years.
Yeah, $771,000 to replace them, for the training and the equipment. I think that that's a pretty good example of what Commissioner Shue talked about earlier, about the cost of getting, training and acquiring new employees versus retaining them. And so what we've talked about from a retention standpoint, that's a pretty significant payback.
Yes.
Huge.
Absolutely.
Payback.
That, that next step says that if approved, you would anticipate that the effective date would be the pay period that starts April 19th, and then those employees would receive increases in their paycheck on May 10th. So you're kind of, we're not, while we're not voting on this tonight, your employees are definitely looking for guidance as to, do we hang on for just a little bit to see what's going to happen? So it'd be nice for you to hear from all five of us as to how we feel tonight, I mean...
I'm sure I have employees watching tonight. I'll just be honest with you, I've been asking them, we started this process late fall, is that fair to say? And at multiple meetings, I've asked them to please hold on. I understand there's maybe a desire to walk across the street, as you said, for $6,000 more dollars, $7,000 more dollars. Hold on, and let's see what we can get accomplished, so. And they're great employees, the employees I've got, they're hanging in there doing their job every day. I mean, I cannot say enough good things about them, I mean, what they're doing, and in the face of all this, I can tell you, to the best of my knowledge, I've not lost one employee yet to those other high-paying agencies. They're waiting, they want to be in Cabarrus County, they want to work at Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office, they really do. The caveat is, they want to get paid. The caveat is, they want to get paid just like their peers. That's where they are. And I can deal with a difference of a thousand or two dollars. I think we create an environment where you won't leave me for $2,000. But the closer the better. Obviously, if you're at the top of the heap, you're at the top of the heap, that's just where it is. So, um, they're hanging on, they're hanging on.
Did, did you say earlier in your statement that for the state of North Carolina, there was over four, it was a negative 400? And officers that we had lost?
Of all the law enforcement positions in North Carolina, at the municipal level, county and city, it went down 428 officers across the state. So I know agencies that have vacancies, Durham County, uh, for example, over 200. You, you know, and, and, you know, it's, it's a tough market. And it's tougher some other areas than it is, uh, others. And, um, you know, it, it becomes a, a challenge if you don't stay up with it.
Well, and I know these numbers, I mean, looking through this, that, you know, we just received this evening, uh, you know, it's substantial for these deputies. And, you know, I, I know that the pay is important, uh, very important. It's, going back to that 400 number across the state, it's a shame that the way law enforcement has been painted in politics, whether it's, you know, federal, state level, you know, we, um, we've not seen the support to law enforcement that, you know, we should see. And I mean, we've seen that, you know, you had mentioned how your numbers have went down over the years for applicants. And, you know, everything that took place in the summer of 2020 and, um, what law enforcement has had to deal with is, is a shame. And we should have been more supported, um, you know, throughout those times.
Well, and, and your remarks are right on point. In 2020, remember I told you in 2019, we had 806 applications? In 2020, we had 157.
See, that's ridiculous.
Now, we've rebounded, but we've never rebounded to the 800 level.
Right.
But yes, it, it, it did result, and it's going to take many cities and counties a long time to recover for this. If you, if you don't do something that at least addresses that core part of compensation.
Right. Well, and you know, and, and so, you know, I agree with this and I'm okay with this. But, you know, I, I do think that there's a lot of issues, you know, as we said, that, you know, it's going to take a long time to get over some of that. And, you know, there's some people that just won't even look at the field because of, because of what has went on over the years and, and. So anyway, that's a shame. But, um, I did want to ask, um, about would this affect any of the contracts we have with the municipalities?
They've all been told that we're in the midst of a salary study and to expect, you know, impossible.
Yes, they've, they've been given a general range, you know, what it could be. And their, their response, to be honest, has all been positive. We understand. Um, Captain Meesmer is, he is over our Harrisburg Division. He's personally had conversations and they were, that they completely understood and would make the, the adjustments they needed to make.
I didn't think there'd be any opposition, but I didn't know if they had been involved in.
Yes.
Some are, you know, aware.
We didn't want to just drop it on them.
Yeah.
If it comes to pass, we wanted them to.
Right.
Because they're, they are good partners and we wanted them to prepare for it.
Right, I didn't want them to be surprised.
Yes.
But, um, but, you know, I'm hap, I'm fine with this. I'm, you know, hopefully this will help with your, um, your staffing issues and recruiting and retention. And, um, you know, I, I had, uh, spent one evening with one of your deputies as a ride-along and I was very impressed with the professionalism and, um, you know, and the quality of work they did, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, other question, I, I, a couple of questions. You, um, when did you first take office, 2018?
2018, December of 2018.
2018, and I think at that time, there were a significant number of vacancies, if I recall correctly. And we've had one salary study since then, is that correct?
I, I, if I recall, I think in 2015, when I came here, uh, under Sheriff Riley, there was a salary study that touched some positions, but not all. I think they touched some supervisory positions in 15 and then the salary study two years ago, does that sound?
There was one in between as well.
Compression. Yeah, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we've made some adjustments that helped during the interim and now we've just seen this significant movement.
Yes.
Yeah, and so to, to go ahead and approve this will have a $2 million impact on our current budget year, which will be covered by lapsed salaries, which are positions that have not been filled, that we've not been paying. So that, that's not a big problem. To, um, but to, to make, basically if we approve this now, we are committing to this new salary schedule that's going to have a 9.5 million dollar impact on next year's budget. Uh, so when we sit down at the table to start discussing the budget, I just think it's important to make sure that, 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 that we are, are very intentional in making sure people hear what we're talking about.
Mr. Meesmer?
Yeah, uh, one question I meant to ask, uh, you had mentioned about overtime. I can't remember, I think you said it was like 1.7?
So, yes, 1.7 million.
So will this, I know you said that there's circumstances that are unavoidable with overtime and I certainly understand that, but would, would this help alleviate some of that?
Absolutely, absolutely, especially, um, you, you know, especially in certain areas where we're dramatically understaffed.
Right.
That will help us eliminate that. I, you know, it's going to be incremental as we bring people on. I hope they come flooding, knocking down the doors, to be honest with you. Um, I, the most overworked people are my training and recruitment folks. And they're, he's probably laughing at me, but, uh, but with, with each time those positions are filled, especially in the detention center, we're eliminating that need for some of that mandatory overtime until we can do it without overtime, if that makes sense. That's a substantial amount of overtime and I, and I get that. And, and when we break it down, it's based on, you, you know, areas that have substantial vacancies in them and having to fill them, even, even in our patrol division, we sometimes have to pull people to come in because we don't want a patrol squad that's covering 360 miles, square miles of county to, to be short. You, you know, I, we don't want that, you, you know. And so I, I think yes, and I, I think it's one of those things that's gotten to the point where we all recognize, you know, the amount of money that's being spent. And we've gone to our employees and said, look, it needs to be required, it needs to be justified. Our supervisor will advise or hold accountable to it, those types of things. Other than those that are unanticipated, an IVC that has to be transported, you know, to New Hanover County at the end of a shift, a, a call that holds over a squad for three hours, that could be up to 12 officers for three hours because it's a significant event. You just can't control some of that, you know, missing children, Alzheimer's patients, dementia patients that wander off. We call out resources to locate them. Those are unanticipated, you, you know. But operationally, where we can fill those positions, yes, you'd see a dramatic reduction in that.
And then also too, with the municipality contracts, this 9.5 million dollar number, does that, does that include the municipality contributions? Or will that 9.5 number that comes to us will actually go down a little bit with their contributions?
We didn't factor that into my knowledge, Rashid did the calculations for me, but I'm pretty sure that did not include any paybacks.
So the 9.5 number is going to go down because of overtime alleviation and then the municipality contract? So it's, so it's going to be less than 9.5?
Yeah, you, approximately, you'd be pulling 34 positions out that are paid for, you know, by the municipalities. So that's, that's a very good point. That would, that will reduce, reduce it significantly.
And I appreciate you working on the other parts of the budget.
Yes.
You know?
Well, we didn't feel like it was right to come and add, make, make an ask of personnel in other areas where we know this is our priority. I mean, it, it just is, all the other things will fall by the wayside if we can't staff it.
Right, and that's right. And I, and I, and I know that your staff appreciate that too, you know, putting them first. And I know you may have some other needs that will come down eventually, but this is number one priority.
Have something, Commissioner Shu?
I did, uh, I'm all for what you want to do, Van. Because, you know, I've already, I don't want to be redundant how I feel about, you know, our personnel. But, you know, the root of the problem when it comes to law enforcement, would you say that the majority of your turnover comes from the detention center itself or is it deputies that's out in the field?
Um, the detention center, I, I mean, I think, you, you know, that's where our greatest vacancies are. It's a tough job.
Yeah.
It's 12 hours a day inside, uh, you, you know, constantly face-to-face with inmates. Um, it, it is a tough job. I, I'm very satisfied with what they've come up with to compensate a detention officer. I think it will create an opportunity for me to heavily recruit detention officers. I can tell you that I also sit on the North Carolina Fellows Board for Criminal Justice at the, at the state level. We're, we're doing some good, Cabarrus County is now included in that to pay for college, to recruit people to come in. Um, I'm on the Training and Standards Commission for North Carolina as a commissioner and we are going to be discussing lowering the age of detention officers at the age we can hire them. Uh, South Carolina lowered that to 18 years old. They did a study of how it's going and they're, they're performing. Those 18-year-olds are performing better in their performance and retention than 25-year-olds that were hired. So, um, you, you know, I think there's some things on the forefront that could help us significantly. If I could recruit an 18-year-old, good solid applicant out of high school, get them in the criminal justice field and they make a decision whether they want to be a D O or a deputy, um, that, that's substantial. So we're, there, there's a lot of work going on across the state as to how we solve this problem. And I think that there's a lot of out-of-the-box thinking.
Yes, well, that, that's very important. It's just like for DHS, we have such a big problem with our social workers because it's difficult, you're dealing with, you know, troubled situations there that not just anybody can handle. And then of course, with you, with your, um, your DOs, as you refer to them, detention officers, uh, that's got to be a, um, you know, it takes a special person to do a job like that. And I just wonder, you know, fixing this particular problem here, but that won't do anything special for them. Those people that, uh, positions that's hard to fill, you, you can't get them. Obviously, if they come to work for the sheriff's office, they probably start there and then work their way up to get out to become a, um, a roving deputy, which is what a lot of them do. But I wish that there was a way that we could do more for detention officers to keep them. Because that, that would be, if I was in your shoes, which I'm not, thank God for that. But if I was though, retention though, how, what can I do to keep you? I used to tell my people a long time ago, so look, and I'm telling you the gospel truth. I'd tell people when I would hire them years ago, I'd, I would tell them, I'm, look, you know, I'm not looking for a lifetime commitment, but I am looking for you to be around for a while. And, uh, and sometimes you get a good one. And if they're, if they're good enough to hire, they're good enough to keep. Because we have a strenuous hiring policy, they got to meet the different criteria and all that. But if they're good enough to hire, they're good enough to keep. And then you get them, what do you do to keep them? And so, uh, detention officer seems to be where a lot of the problem is. What can we do? And you say, with you on that special committee that you're on, maybe you can bring us some ideas that will help you.
Absolutely.
Because that, because that's what I want to do and I'm, feel sure my fellow commissioners are the same.
Absolutely, there, we, we do have some ideas, um, that we can certainly bring before you. I think the important thing is to take step one and then look at the others because it, it's like anything, there's a price tag assigned to it. And, uh, but it's, it's not at the level this is. But this is that first stepping stone to whether we come back and talk about career development, incentive programs, those types of things. Uh, you, you know, there, there's going to be some ideas out there that I think would be worthy of bringing back to you.
Well, I'll surely be one to be waiting to hear something on that. I appreciate all you do and all you deputies there. You know, it's a hard job, you know, it's definitely a hard job and I appreciate everything you do.
Well, thank you.
Man, it looks like, and you can correct me if it's wrong, that with this, there'll be 72 positions impacted by this.
Yes.
Of the detention officers.
Yeah, yeah.
So 72.
It, it's going to help our detention officers significantly. It, it will definitely, um, provide us with, with a competitive edge in the detention officer area specifically.
I guess the, um, question, the answer that I have not heard, maybe we don't have it computed yet, but we don't know what the actual budgetary impact is going to be for us for fiscal year 25. It's going to be 9.5 million dollars, less whatever we can save in overtime, less whatever the contracted positions to the municipalities. Is that accurate? So we don't really know, we haven't computed exactly what that net budgetary impact is going to be.
We can definitely give you a number that, um, this takes out the contracts. The overtime will always be something that we.
Some fluctuation, yes.
Probably won't be able to, um, give you an estimate on.
Yeah, and I, I just think it's important that we're real upfront and honest with. I hope there's 5,000 people watching this meeting tonight, although I suspect that's not the case. But, um, I mean, these are the kind of decisions that we have to make that have budgetary impacts. And so if we're going to, you know, let's, um, let's say we knock, uh, $3 million off this and it's 6.5 million total and that, I feel like, might be close to accurate. Then that means we've got to either find 6.5 million dollars in additional revenue or we got to cut 6.5 million dollars out of something we're already doing. Uh, that's, that's the only way that I know that, that it makes it work. And if anybody has a suggestion of another way to approach that, I'd love to hear it. And of course, I know that we're not in our budget process right now, but we're, seems like we're always in the budget process. Either, either formulating the budget or managing the budget. Any, any comments from anybody else on, on that? And so I think the, um, the, the request is that we approve this salary study at our regular meeting so that you see the next steps on your slide there, well, it's on screen. That, that would put, put this into work. So when we do that, we're committing to adding somewhere around $6 million to next year's budget. And, and we've got, um, Jimmy Lentz here from EMS. Did you have anything that you wanted to add while we're on the discussion?
I will say, and Commendar Shaw for doing a fantastic job of describing that. And there are a lot of similarities with the two, a, a whole lot of similarities with the two. One difference that I would say, uh, in the two is our current staffing. We have one full-time, we have three full-time vacancies right now with two conditional offers out. So truthfully, we only have one pending the conditional officer, offers go well. And that is a direct result in what happened in October of '22. And just to be totally transparent, the, the system we present, the support we get from you guys, the support we get from the hospital, the inter-agency operability that we are very fortunate to have in this county, all contribute to that. With that, we are asking for expansion in next fiscal year to add another 24-hour ambulance. And that is because of COVID. Uh, so to say it would help us in filling positions acutely is not a big need, but it would certainly help with the recruiting efforts going forward.
Yes. Any questions for either of these gentlemen? Uh, I think as it stands right now, unless. I think as it stands right now, unless somebody voices otherwise, this will go on our, I'm not sure if it's on consent or on new business, but it would go for, to our regular meeting for approval. So thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wonderful, thank you.
Give you an update here real quick. Before we move into the next section, the question earlier was the available board contingency. Currently, it is $1,080,022.
And so if we, so if we did it the way that we did it last time, and this is on the retention, hiring bonuses retention, we just authorized a flat amount of $300,000. And so we could, we could do that again. Sounds like we have the funding available, correct?
Yes.
Or if you have another approach, if you'd rather authorize funding for the, the balance of the fiscal year and then deal with it in the budget, or we can, we can pretty much go either way, is that correct?
We can make it work, yes.
Yeah. So what's your pleasure, Commissioners?
I'm, I'm fine doing the 300 like we did last time.
Just extend this, and to, are you good with the recommendations that she made? She had, you know, several changes.
Yep.
I see consensus for that, to go ahead on consent agenda? Does that work for everybody? Okay, we'll make sure when we get to a regular agenda that that's in place. Okay, so we move now to item 4.14 from planning, Odell School Road abandonment and closure. And we're happy to have Suzie Morris with us for that item.
Good evening. This is a request for a right-of-way and maintenance abandonment with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. As you all are aware, the county does not build or maintain infrastructure. However, the county is part of this process when this needs to happen. For those of you that are familiar with Odell School Road and NC3, they recently installed a roundabout project there. Typically, as part of the projects, the right-of-ways are abandoned. However, in this case, the right-of-way was not abandoned through that project process. So the adjacent property owners contacted the county about going ahead and proceeding with the process to go through the abandonment and maintenance process with the North Carolina Board of Transportation. So you'll see there's a tiny leg of that project that needs to be abandoned, and that is where the road was shifted over to accommodate the roundabout. This is a very long, drawn-out process. We are the first step in that process. For those of you that haven't been exposed to this process yet, it could be months before we see it back. At that point, what would happen tonight, what would happen as far as the presentation? We are asking that it go on consent agenda because there is a resolution that starts the process. Once that is approved, we gather together a packet, we send that off to the Transportation Board in Raleigh by way of the Albemarle Office, and then we wait to see if they are going to agree to abandon the maintenance and the right-of-way. Once we have the formal letter back from NC DOT, we then bring that back to you all as a second resolution, which would then, there would be a public hearing with that part. We have to do advertising, we have to do noticing with certified letters. And then you all consider the final step as to whether or not it is appropriate for that abandonment to happen. There's also a public hearing that happens at that meeting. So we are at the first step. The applicant is asking that you all please consider approving the resolution so that they can start this process. And then if it is approved, then we will move forward with working with our local DOT office to have it placed on the agenda in Raleigh. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think the only question that I would have is, and it's my understanding that maybe these property owners were not aware of this whole long, drawn-out process initially. So they had not taken these steps. If, if we were to suspend the rules and take action on this night, would that help them at all to get two weeks, or maybe, maybe not? Or probably not?
Probably not, because it has to go through the local NC DOT office, and then it is scheduled by the Transportation Board, whoever handles their agendas, to be placed on the agenda. I don't know what kind of timeframe they have or how many items they allow on an agenda. You know, once it is back, this is, this is clearly regulated by the state statute, so there is a process that we have to follow, including once it does come back, we receive notice that they are going to approve the request. It has to be advertised for three consecutive weeks. And again, that noticing has to happen, so there is a clearly prescribed process that we have to follow. And, you know, we are just kind of at the mercy of the process.
So this falls in that same category that I was asking about a while ago, is we must do this, and we have to do this, and same as the jail and the other things that we talked about, yeah.
Correct, and, and it's, it's an interesting process because again, the county does not build or maintain infrastructure, yet the county is interjected into this process when DOT has a request to abandon maintenance and right-of-way on their system.
So it's just that small piece of property that shows is the old road.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, and if you, there were some pictures in there. If you drive past, you can see, you can kind of see where the grass is a little lower, where it's down. But essentially, you, if you did not know and you were just driving past, it just appears to be part of the field because the contractor did remove the road bed and the asphalt. This piece just did not happen as part of that process.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item from the sheriff's office, acceptance of grant from State 911 Board. Happy to have Chief Deputy Tessa Burchett.
Yes, good evening. This is a fairly straightforward request. The North Carolina 911 State Board had, has offered to all PSAPs in the state to buy backup radio systems for every console in their 911 center. It is at a reimbursement, so we would buy it first, and then the state would reimburse us the money. There is a budget amendment in there that Suzanne Burgess put together for us. Essentially, the quote is 77,000, just under 77,000. We do have 2,200 in purchase services that we would put towards it, and the state would reimburse us for $75,000.
Okay, questions for Chief Deputy Burchett? It's a lot easier when people are wanting to give you money.
It is so much easier, yes.
Yeah.
You are right.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, I think that completes all the items that we have for discussion. And we move now to the approval of the regular meeting agenda. And I think we have talked about a couple of changes on that. Which one did you want to move, Commissioner Meesmer?
Item, item three.
Economic Development Grant Policy. So that would go from F3 to now be.
G1.
G1. Was there, seemed like there was one other item that. Which one? Okay, yeah, that, that would be F6. And that one was going to go to April. And I think that was, that was all. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda with those two changes, which was F3 will be G1, and F6 will be moved to April. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we do have need of a closed session tonight.
We have some food if you want to take a break in between.
And so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 5. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Would like to thank everybody for joining us tonight. Remind everybody that tomorrow is primary election day. The polls will be open from 6:30 a.m. until 7:30 p.m. And we hope everybody goes out and votes, and we are now in closed session. Thank you.
We, we have some food.